Mining a Sioux Rock quarry. The EAW process, the purpose of the EAW, I'm gonna just read this off of the information in EQB. Purpose of the EAW comments and comment responses is to provide the record on which the RGU can base a decision about whether an EIS needs to be prepared for a project. EIS need is described in the rules as an EIS shall be ordered for projects that have a potential for significant environmental effects. There's four factors we look at in determining. They are number one, type, extent, and reversibility of environmental effects, which deals with the nature and significance of the environmental effects that will or could result from the project. B is cumulative effects, cumulative potential effects of related or anticipated further projects. See the extent to which environmental effects are subject to mitigation by ongoing public regulatory authority, provided that the RGU may rely only on mitigation measures that are specific and can reasonably be expected to be effective. So things that we'd look at, things that could be permitted with conditions. So that would be the things that would, if they could be conditioned to deal with them or not. And then number four, the extent to which environmental effects can be anticipated and controlled as a result of other available environmental studies undertaken by public agencies or the project proposer, including other EISs. So that's the purpose of our meeting today. We will introduce everyone in the room before we start. And then if there's opportunity for anyone to speak today, we'd ask that you'd state your name before you speak. We'll go with introductions. I'm Phil Harder, Planning Commission.
Lindsey Cartwright, Planning Commission Member.
Josh Bass, Planning Commission Member.
Mike Hoggan, Planning Commission Member.
Asia Weber, Cottonwood County Attorney.
Tom Apple, Planning Commission Member, representing the county board.
Nick McCabe, ISG.
Mark Butler, MPM.
Mike Wang, MPM.
Jess Phillips, MPM.
Cody Ocean Rooms, Landowner.
Kevin Ocean Rooms, Landowner.
Matt Rodmacher, Historic Historical Site.
David Breezy, Site Manager, Jupers Petroglyphs.
Jessica Ed, Lower Sioux Citizen.
Tom Sanders, Red Rock Ridge Research Group.
Richard Nelson, Lower Sioux.
Mel Beans, Lower Sioux.
Larry Anderson, County Commissioner.
Steven Scott, County Commissioner.
Kevin Rasmussen, SWCD.
Alex Schultz, Planning, Stone, County County.
Okay, thank you for all being here today. And with that, we will reconvene the public hearing for MPM. And I'm gonna turn it over to Alex for a minute here to get it started.
As far as reading the public hearings?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Let's read that again.
Yep. An EAW has been submitted by Minnesota Paving Materials and Response to a Position for EAW for expansion required by Minnesota Rules 4410 on parcel of the property described as the Southeast Porter Section 8. On T107 North Range 35 West, Township, Minnesota. Public hearing was tabled, a new date to consider. Said EAW will be held by the Kalamon County Planning Commission on March 13th, 2025, at 12:30 PM. The hearing will be held at 1012 Fifth Avenue at Park in Wyndham, Minnesota, 56101. Any questions, please call 507-832-8287.
Okay, thank you, Alex. I think our first order here, well, I'll ask the people from MPM with the review and the response to the initial EAW. If you have anything you wanna talk about at this time. You know, with what you presented to us as far as the, if you just wanna make any statement before we start.
Our response document, that's all.
Okay, okay. Then I would ask the board, if anyone has questions on the information that's been presented.
I'm sure.
Yes.
And that response document that we received yesterday been distributed publicly into everybody involved. It's been distributed to everyone that's asked for it so far. And then to you guys.
With us, so.
It has not been, I haven't sent it to every single person on the attendance sheet last, the last meeting.
Last meeting yet. Oh, okay. And I haven't, it's what, 78 pages? I'm just giving a few pages, but I have, I have not gone through it in its entirety. And I guess that's my point, that we may eventually have to postpone this or whatever we have for options.
We also had, received a map this morning. I don't know if anyone's received that yet.
Correct.
So I pushed that over to you guys this morning. I forwarded it to you guys this morning. So it seems part of the planning commission hasn't even reviewed that, the map yet. I would probably suggest postponing this. So we have time to review the response and to let anyone in the audience, if they would like to see the response to the comments as well, review them since it is public data.
Hmm.
So that's my suggestion, but it's up to you as a planning commission.
What are the feelings of the other members of the, and I, I received it yesterday. I think it was late morning and kind of powered through it, but it's a lot, lot to digest and.
That would be my point, it's left to digest. So we've no more, the only we can finish taking today is any public comments. We're not gonna receive any additional written comments or written responses. I mean, today is the day with, we're done receiving information other than verbal comments.
Today is the day that if the proposer does not have any further spoken comment or written comment to turn in, after that, there's no other comments to turn in. The public, the public comments are already done. That was done 30 days ago. So the only thing left is the response for public comment, which is done by the proposer. And if they don't want to turn anything else in by the end of today at 4:30, then, then we, then we have everything to review. We officially have everything.
I personally like, I got this came in last night after I made it all to the, to the end reference. And so did not finish, and I didn't get to see the map, but Alex.
Yeah. It's, it's one thing just to read through it and then it takes more time to, you know, understand some of the responses. I agree.
I do, yeah. I do. Read summary, some bullet points.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna do that.
So my name is Nick McCabe from ISG. We are the agent for the applicant. We put together the majority of the comment responses in conjunction with them. As you can tell, a good chunk of the comments were regarding the archaeological study and the archaeological significance of the area with the Jeffer's Petroglyphs. So we do have responses in there from the certified archaeologists who conducted the study. Some of the information included, talked about indirect impacts to the site, including dust, noise, and visual impacts. So if there's reference in there to the dust control plan, which is an enforceable part of their existing condition of the permit. The noise information is, and the seismograph information for the blasting is included, which is all enforceable per Minnesota state law. And then that map that was sent around this morning is a visual observation map. So we had.
Can I pause that?
Yeah.
The, it's on your sheet under View Sheet Map, or it's on your computer's View Sheet Map. If you guys wanna look at that right now, like, subscribe here.
So what we did was set up some, several observer locations on the Petroglyphs property, at the Petroglyph site itself, at the visitor center, and a couple of locations along the walking trails that are closest to the property line. And so the colors on the map show what the sightlines are from those locations. So the darker the color, the more they can see from those locations. The lighter the color, the less they can see from those locations. And if there is no color on the map, there's no actual visual or ability to see from the surface at those locations. So we wanted to try to, try to explain that, cause it's not perfectly intuitive to everyone, obviously, so.
Yeah, and that was, that was the map that was handed in this morning. So it's definitely, it's definitely still part of the public response, response to the public comments. And should be, definitely be taken into consideration when coming up with the findings.
But when I downloaded it on my computer at home, it just showed the blue dots and the square. Didn't have any of the other colorings in it, so I'll have to.
It's a, it's a big, it's a very big picture. It's like one megabyte or something like that.
Yeah.
Or it's a pretty in-depth picture.
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't have any other colorings, but it would pretty much load.
Yeah, we can send an updated version if it would be helpful as an image file. Cause sometimes the PDF files have different layers. I don't know how some of that loads onto different computers.
Yeah, you can try, yeah, you can try sending that. It's, it's loaded, it took, you know, 10, 15 seconds to load this, on this device by itself, so. And does it, you're on the email, correct?
I received the email and it came through just fine.
Okay, yeah, alright.
Eventually, it's.
It should be okay, but either way, like if, if, if it's not, if these guys have issues with it or if anyone has issues with it, if you, if we get it the next day, it still counts as this picture. Also use it.
Could we print some copies if somebody wants it?
Yep, yep, yep. I have every, I have a paper version of every, everything that's been turned in, comments, response to comments. EAWs, redacted EAWs, everything.
Is there anything else you wanna add, Tom?
I think that covers most of it.
And I think instead of us asking a few questions now, and, and not everyone's had opportunity to delve into the details, I think if, if the rest of the board, if we have a motion to recess this meeting to a further date, it would be better just to hold off our questions until that time. So we're all focused equally and can look at this as a, as a board equally.
I would agree. How much time would we need?
How much time could we have?
Yeah, up to 30 days or an agreeable time span with the proposer. I would say 30 days definitely push it. That's a little too much, I think.
I think.
We could do with, you could do with that 30 days. I mean, I would just say, look at your calendars and see what, what's the best day to meet up for you as planning.
Propusers, it is to fully review everything since we got.
Need at least three to, to send out for open meeting law. You need at least three and you can have up to 30. So 13th now. I will be, I will be at a conference the 25th to the 27th, two weeks from now. And Monday, the Monday before that is Board of Adjustment Meeting. I think you guys wanna meet there. I would suggest probably the first week in April.
April 3rd is the date we're looking at?
There's a question in the back.
Yes.
Matt Rodmacher with the Minnesota Historical Society, just to comment on the visual APE that they just referenced. So in C2's response letter from Shippensburg.
You want us to open the, open the meeting to public comment this time? Or is it, it'd be up to you guys before you, before any comments?
Is that okay if we do that and then come back to the date?
Coincidental, yes.
Open the meeting to public comment?
Just regarding the visual APE, in C2's report and comment letter from Shippensburg, specifically said they only agreed to the updates of the recorded site boundary and that additional study would be needed to assess the potential indirect effects of the proposed project, which ever so. So Shippensburg never really cleared this project from the get-go. They usually give a, an assessment of no historic properties effective or no adverse effect. And that was not completely with Shippensburg. And they also alluded to continuing studies and consultation. So I just wanted to bring that up, that, that that was never included in that report. And so these things need to be kind of gone through Shippensburg and upon and concord with them before they agree on the issue of finding, I know it has this effect in this case. I just wanted to bring that before moving the board.
Right. I, were, were you able to look at the response information?
Yes.
Okay. I believe in, in C2's, in their response letter, they did, and maybe that's the comment you made. They did say that it does need further study. They recommend further study on that part. So I don't, I think that's maybe what you said, but you were talking about Shippensburg.
They recommended additional study, open to the mine. But they all, I mean, they also stated that their, their method, methodologies and everything was, was up to the standards of the state.
Correct.
Which isn't not true, but again, referencing the Shippensburg response letter that they included in their appendix, Shippensburg specifically says no more study.
Okay.
So I would say that, that should be an opportunity.
And I think the question on the, on the study that I, that I read or discovered was that for a phase one study, which this, which this was, was, is kind of a initial study and they met the requirements of a phase one study is what?
The phase one still should have included that assessment of visual aid.
Sure, okay.
And these sites on natural.
Okay. And that was why, and that's why C2 recommended further study and they didn't do it for the phase one? But if it's part of phase one, I'm not sure why they didn't do it then, so. Okay. Anyone else wanna make a comment? Yes, Tom?
Tom Sanders, Red Rock Ridge Research Group. I talked to Dave Mather yesterday, received this.
And can you tell us, Dave Mather?
Dave Mather is a state historic, present and jobs archaeologist. And that was not, it was not in people, whatever, who will terms later, as was just stated. And in, in the meeting, every agency has said that this certainly was not sufficient. So, you know, I'm arguing against it. That was an appropriate certificate, which includes all of it. State Historic Office of State Archaeologists, Amanda Grugel said, not sufficient. Not appropriate. And she sent, it sent to a letter and told them what they need to do. And I've been in contact with all of them, all of them, it's not sufficient. It has been said, you could argue both the phase one, well, then you need to, we need to do a phase two. If that's true, you know, so I am also in conversation with MPCA and the DNR about water issues. We're in conversation. We do have concerns about how much water. Two of the letters mentioned that the Lawrence quarry could add, if that goes through, that proposed quarry, that could add to the issue and that needs to be considered. But what they, what they did not talk about was the Red Rock, which has taken water out of this watershed and pumping it into Big Cottonwood, Cottonwood watershed. So there are real water issues here and there are real dust issues. There, and by the way, a fellow who owns land at Hatmouth in the quarry, who had to quit hunting pheasant in her field because the dust was so high in his field. The Hatmouth, due west, it's Dave Calaman. He was hoping to be here. He has never heard about his needs. He's a half mile, his land is a half mile, due west. So there's, you know, I think there are gonna be lots of conversations going on about this. The EAW and the Argal, there's still conversation at this time going on about that. And I do know that the MPCA will be making final decisions to end shipboard. Everybody will make it, be making their final comments as this process moves on.
Okay, thank you, Tom. I think when I read at the beginning of the, before the hearing opened, the, the EAW and the finding, the things we look at, one of those is the, one of the main criterias is the cumulative effects of, of this and related. So those will be part of the consideration as we move forward. Those cumulative effects as, as required, as we review the EAW per the EQB. For that.
I'd like to make a comment. Kalamon County, Landowner. Grease cattle, sheep, everything right next to the rock quarry are all lives. There's never been a dust issue. It's not bothering the wildlife. Just look at the geese next to the place. They're just thick presence. So that's my comment. Even if he's lived there, the last 10, 15 years, they don't have dust issues.
Also like to make the point that our currently impacted quarry does have an EAW and an archaeological study associated with it. And if this sufficiency is in question, I don't know how that one will be sufficient. Cause this is above and beyond what was done for the archaeological study.
David?
Um, so two points. One, on dust mitigation issue, they do provide a plan for dust mitigation. Is it filed and how is that enforced? Because I've made plenty of calls over to the office to ask them to turn on their dust mitigation systems. I have had my business impacted by it, where I've had to close down state historical site due to fugitive dust emissions on five occasions. So there is a dust issue. It's just that is where the dust is flowing. And if that dust mitigation system is up to the task of, you know, putting those emissions down and passing them. And then I have a comment on the visual, the APEV that you should study. I've gone through with other companies, like Big Bend Energy. You know, traditionally, when there is a view should study, like on an impacted site like Jeffer's Petroglyphs, that organization works with Jeffer's Petroglyphs to identify, you know, key observation points because they don't know where the visitor experience is. They don't have that information. They can just come up with their own points and say, this is what we found, but it wasn't ever done with any input from us. And that would typically happen as they come over, can we take photos? Where is the visitor experience? And then go from there.
Thank you.
Since the, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Comment. Since it was brought up about the survey that was done in 2009, I think I'll catch you all from this. You've been, 2009, it was an EAW done by ISG and they said there was no sites in that area. And at that time, the commissioners and people asked me to work with them. And so I did, and I did that survey on my, on work time with an employee. We did that for free, no cost. And we found major archaeological sites there. So I'll submit my survey that I found sites that even though I was looking for, not defined. I wanted to look for sites. And we found major sites. And again, I'll state, I've surveyed 1,400 acres here on that ridge and I have, and I've, I have found 27 new sites. In my time on the ridge, I have added 6,000 new carvets to the record. My experience, I am a registered professional archaeologist. And I have 25 years of working with American ANL to help me become, so I can recognize and understand that. I've done extensive research on the ridge. I know the ridge. Nobody has any more experience than me, archaeology on the Red Rock Ridge. And never have I been talked to, ever. And that's part of the problem. They only talked to Shippensburg and they went on a letter from Shippensburg that was not saying this was, you're done deal. They didn't talk to any agency, the American community.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else wanna make a comment? Question for the proposer, for Kevin. The information that they're talking about, these letters that have come from Shippensburg and various things in regards to their review of the plan. You heard what they stated in the letters that were sent. Are those all part of the record? Those have all been submitted to Alex and are part of the record? Okay. So when we, when we're reviewing, that information is all there? Okay. Okay, thank you.
I have one more question. The next meeting, will we still, you know, are we gonna review everything? The important, will, will we review things? Do we still have opportunity for comments at the next meeting? Or is that done now?
Not sure how that.
It won't affect, they can have public comments, but they won't affect the findings. The findings will be based off of the public comment and the response to the public comments.
Right. I think like any, any meeting we have, there's opportunity to voice your concerns, but it's like Alex said, it's not gonna go into the record.
So we can just say things now?
I'm not sure that that public comment period.
The public comment period's open.
Closed 30 days ago with that, to respond to the EAW?
Correct. So any interaction we have now is just the personal on the record?
I believe so, yes. Zach?
It'll, it goes into the minutes of the meet, not the, the findings of facts for the EAW decision.
But if we were to make more statements now, we would still, you would still hear it?
We would hear it, yes.
Yep.
Yep.
I'm curious if I can, I think it's open to hearing yet, but there's the response from ISG here. They reference February 24th and March 10th, in-person, March 3rd meeting multiple times. Was that meeting only with, with David Breezy or was there other folks involved in that?
March 3rd meeting at the, at the Petroglyphs?
I'm just, I'm reading the dates out of your document, yes.
We've had multiple meetings since we last.
Okay, but David was the only one that was involved?
David, Jeff Rankin, Jeff Ronstir.
I don't know if it's a legitimate question, but what was the, I'll call it the temperature, the result of those?
We, we went to go kind of establish it with them, hear some more specifics on what their concerns were, cause the initial response letters were brought. And, you know, we, we took a little, a few of the Petroglyph sites and went up on like the ridge there looked at a few of the Petroglyphs and asked some questions, both the mean and some of the stuff is known and some of it isn't, some of it's kind of a trade secret or. But out of that, you know, we tried to help explain that the current operations for quarries, if you're blasting rock in this extension and taking that rock. and taking that rock to our current operation process. Um, we talked about the dust and the view shed a little bit and how the, um, I think a lot of the concern was the, the depth of bed rock out there. It was quartzite being the kind of defining object to the findings Petronas. And we've got real data, ER data that shows pretty consistent eight foot of overburdened glacial soils. It couldn't get any quartzite. So we tried to alleviate some of those concerns with that information. And with that TP of overburden, we're going to have to build berms around this hole. That's per MSHA and that's just operation, how you have to do it. These berms stand V of, you know, fifteen to twenty feet tall. And that's where that view shed analysis game plays, see if that's right, firm, nothing behind it. Um, another point that we tried to make was allowing this expansion horizontally will allow us to take our operation eventually down a bench, take the crusher, the plant, everything down the bench. All stockpile, the majority of the stockpile, we'll be able to have another lower bench. And that would further alleviate any dust and view shed issues. That was kind of the, the main points of that meeting.
Okay, thank you. For the question mark on your meetings with Historic Society, did you meet with any members of the Lower Sioux community?
Not in person at the Historical Society, but we had a couple of conference halls. There had to be members of the Lower Sioux community on the phone.
Okay.
David, comment about the dust. Right now, the dust appears to be coming out from the fine pile like it was just a week ago. It's the piles packed up closer to the river. So what, how will that be mitigated? How is that big pile of fine material that's unusable, the rock, there are two piles and that's where the dust appears coming from now? So how's that going to be mitigated?
Could be used in a berm. Um, we are continually trying to improve process to reduce that type of waste material. But we sort of done it at our new home quarry already. And, you know, it's, it's not good for us to have waste product either. Product comes out of that ground to be assembled dry. So at least we're trying to improve our process to use that pile, um, and, you know, these berms. So whatever's that exists there now could be built up with some of that material. So you don't need to be captive by any excuse, any excuse.
But I did have questions about like the potential of moving it down because last June of that area that we moved the operation of the quarry and the grinding and the piles, that was under, you know, several feet of water for the entire month. So I just, I, I just would like to hear like how you propose to move it down when you have, you have seasonal flooding that you experience.
It's been running for about ten days, um, pumping, I pump the water. Pump the water, there is actually another gorge level, probably gorge level below that, the west, west side of all. And there's a Bieber salt in the southwest one.
Southwest.
In the southwest, where the gorge is large. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's like fourteen and a half inches of rain, like sixteen dollars.
And rest assured, that bag is just going to flood with all of our branch equipment on there, we're going to find it.
One other time, Chad Phillips, MPM, I'd just like to comment on the whole dust mitigation thing. There's a lot of things that we're doing and have done, um, the last sixteen months to mitigate this dust. We're working with a company out of California right now with some real time monitoring. And we're, we're open five days a week out there. We don't, we don't have people there knowing what's going on in the weekends. Um, we're close to signing something with them and that'll be real time monitoring. We'll be able to see it on our phones. And our plan is to put something in place to help mitigate that, whether that's moving the pile here in 2024. Uh, we sold a hundred and sixty thousand ton of the, we call it waste products, sand, two different substation products, hair and leg. We're pricing this stuff right because we are, we're, we're trying to, trying to get these waste piles down any way we can. From an engineering standpoint, um, the guys are, are looking at what can we do to our gradations so that we can better utilize some of these fines and materials so we don't get this.
Well, it's been brought up in the past about the, the current damage versus the previous damage. Before that quarry was open all season long. Now we're in there for like three months and producing the same amount. So we've reduced our poison effect drastically from what was, what is now.
But the, the dust impact, if you hurt dust mitigation systems, only work under certain conditions and when it's hot enough to run the water through to get them going. So like over half the year, that dust mitigation system isn't running and we're receiving those fines and fugitive dust without any kind of oversight from you or any other oversight from anybody else. And if we call and complain about it, there's nothing you can do. That's, that system can't run in winter. It can't run in spring until it's warm enough and it doesn't run in fall. So I, I do really like to hear that you, you're, you're making headway, but I would, I'd really like to see that.
Well, David, like we talked, Dave Mark and I were there, you know, talking about things that we can do with the piles. You know, things we can put on them to stabilize that stuff. Um, we made three minutes, was that the mall? We put some of that stuff on, but you, you know, you made comments about, is it acidic, you know? So before we do any of that there, we'll definitely be working with you guys. So we, you know, we're not affecting. That's all part of our mitigation plan. If we can, if we can sell this stuff, you know, it's going to take care of it. You, we can show you, we fly these sites four times a year with drones. We can show you progress in the last sixteen months where these stockpiles have gone, so.
It's unfortunate that the waste product is also the most detrimental product for, for the dust part of it. That's.
That's problems.
Any other public comment? Anyone else? We're going to close the period of public comment and then I think we're going to continue with, um, we're looking at a future date. I think the last we talked was April third. And for you guys too, from MPM, that, that would be a date that would work for you, you all.
The twenty seventh work?
I think Alex has gone the twenty seventh, is that correct?
You guys, you guys can still do it if you want. Um, I will be gone, but.
Oh, okay. No, I'm good. Yeah, that was.
Same time?
Yeah, yeah, same time. Uh, I'll go. So use this library.
Two thousand ninety, was that ISG or INS who did that one? You guys remember?
Same company.
That's the same company? Okay. Good to know.
Third minute alone, it's easier to pronounce.
I'll just, I'll be right back. Uh, this is going to be used by the FFA for like a hundred fifty kids that day. So I might try the LED basement at the same time. Um, if that doesn't work, we might have to change the times. But I'm going to call Kathy right now, if you guys want. Kathy, March, right?
You guys have been to Law Enforcement Center, just up the road here.
Sounds familiar.
Yeah. Yeah. That way, yeah, you're, that way.
You come in the entry, don't go through the second door, just take the door to your left and it takes you down a flight of stairs into a nice conference room in the basement.
Second door is a dead end.
Well, right, and you just end up talking to dispatch and they're busy, but, um.
Unless you want the elevator, then you have to go through that.
Oh, yeah.
Second door, the, usually elevators. It's kind of the main doors.
I think everything else is locked. I think you can only go through on, um, is that west?
Southside.
Yeah, do you by chance have a schedule of the OAC or do you, did it want to just be Kathy?
Kathy's the one that controls it.
Okay, well.
Do we have a third potential meeting area or not?
Potentially, it could be the OAC, but.
It could be on.
Oh, um.
You're fastened at the DNR buildings.
Yeah. I'll just, we'll just do that at twelve thirty. Uh, I suppose we, we should, we need to have a location. I could try calling the DNR.
When will we be back, Alex?
The twenty eighth.
Friday? You're back on the twenty eighth or that's the day you come back?
That's the day I'm back. I am back on the twenty eighth.
Is there a window for the FFA kids that were, they'll be occupied like one day only?
That'll be the whole day, the bad day. I'll try Kelly, uh, Kelly's, so.
April first work for, if the third doesn't work. Would you guys, Mark, possibly or?
I'll make it work, whatever you guys.
Well, I mean, if the third doesn't work, we might consider the first. That works up at the Missioners Town, the first?
We have meetings in the morning, but that's actually work for us in the afternoon.
All right, we're going for the OAC.
Excellent. So April third, twelve thirty PM at the Law Enforcement Center, which is just up the street here, across, across the street, past the fire hall. The conference room is in the basement of the, uh, Law Enforcement Center. So that'll be April third, twelve thirty PM.
Mission period is sort of clear on this, are we going to renotice this whole meeting, Alex? We're going to renotice this as a new meeting, stable for a meeting?
Yeah. Um, I'm not going, you talking about putting it on the paper? Is that what you're going to do? Because I'm going to, I'll send it out to everyone on the email list.
Correct. Versus continuing this, I mean, technically we're not, we don't really have a hearing anymore that we're continuing. Technically, this meeting would be adjourned and then you.
Yeah.
Well, the way I read the, the rule is that you are actually postponing the decision. The rule says you can postpone the decision on the need for an IES for not more than thirty days. So it's a postponement, I guess, of the decision, but you've taken all the comments, comment periods are both closed.
That's one app, so technically we should adjourn this meeting and notice that as a brand new meeting. Sound correct?
I would rather err on the side of giving appropriate notice than none.
Okay.
That's correct. Yes, I can, I'll send out notice then. Uh, what I, would you want me to send out notice to the surrounding land areas? Or would you want me to send out notice to?
Whatever you, I would say whatever you notice to the past, what's that?
Pre-reading proceedings.
The surrounding land areas is what is typical and do that.
Fair.
And then also the list of people who requested notice.
So just like a conditionally used current hearing to that. Uh, for these people that are here today, I will just email you the notice. But then everyone that's in the surrounding land areas, what's that? I think it's a half mile to a mile. I can't remember the exact number.
It's a number.
I will mail it out, same mail.
Does Dick Calaman own that list?
Uh, I could put him on the list, um.
I've got his email if you need it.
So we are going to adjourn this hearing then today? Is that correct? And then we would open a new hearing that would be two.
Technically it won't be a hearing.
It wouldn't be hearing, right?
When there's no hearing.
Yeah, we take, it's just, it's just be part of.
You're split terrace, you're very fine, I get it.
Yeah.
But, but there's, I mean, would be this commissioned in your discretion that if this next meeting, if we even take public comment, I mean, if we even allow the public to be involved in our discussions, that's something to think about because that always gets to be a tricky, tricky situations. Or the, the hearing portions are concluded.
Okay, so we're meeting the third of April, twelve thirty. Anything else for this public hearing? And this public hearing is adjourned. I thank you all for coming today and we'll see you again on the third.
Guys want to approve the, there's three sets of minutes in there. Uh, the ones that have like the random numbers, go, go and hit those up. Two oh two five oh two one.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Yep.
You want that in a room individually or?
Yeah, yeah, a room individually.
Twenty nine is the, is the part involving land.
Yeah. I was a travel station. I really agree.
As I said, my favorite, I tell this one.
Bill, the only question I had was on the twelfth. Last eight, it's a pretty tall. So since it's the beginning, we should have seen it during our research.
The, the, I think the meeting was adjourned, but the hearing wasn't adjourned.
Yeah, meeting was adjourned, hearing was adjourned. Okay.
Because the hearing is within the meeting.
Otherwise we get paid.
I think I had a, I think I learned that in Parliament to proceed your way back.
I need a refresher on and. You did it right.
Folks are challenged.
Because we open a meeting and then within the meeting, we open the hearing and the hearing got table.
Table or.
Yeah. Postponed, postponed, yeah. Yeah, because we didn't, we, I know we didn't adjourn the hearing. Because it was postponed. I remember, I remember that. Yeah.
Yeah. And you are right, the commentary period is closed, just decision making.
I pull you out of the.
Yeah, yes.
Twelve thirty.
Sometimes.
So it's been moved by Josh. Seconded by Lindsay to approve the minutes from August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, the Revolve Labs.
Say that one more time.
Moved by Josh, seconded by Lindsay to approve the minutes from August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, Revolve Labs. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same, motion carries. Is that thirty-three or thirty-one?
That was thirty-one, I thought.
Excellent.
Next one is.
Okay.
What I just said, the minutes for September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Of Quaid. Move votes?
I'm moving to approve the meeting minutes for September twenty-sixth.
I'll second.
Moved by Josh, seconded by Mike to approve the minutes from September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same, that motion carries. And we have minutes from February thirteen, twenty twenty-five. That was, I think it was just the meeting for the quarry. That's correct, that's all we had, that one.
We tabled.
We tabled the hearing on that one and that's brought us today.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Moved by Lindsay.
What was the date?
Seconded by Josh.
February.
February thirteen, twenty twenty-five, any discussion? Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All same, that motion carries. Anything else? I do have a question on the Revolve Labs part. We, we talked back then about a moratorium, did the commissioners do something with the moratorium on?
Believe we passed the moratorium, did we not?
The commissioners did that?
No. We did not pass moratorium. We have to have like a specific time and date that the moratorium begins. And so what? We would need to have in that moratorium, we would need to make an entire ordinance. Well, there isn't any ordinance in like local area. And so there's really no use of a moratorium.
They can't make a moratorium on an ordinance that doesn't exist.
You can make a moratorium, but we would have to.
Then we have to write.
We have to write a whole, a whole ordinance and you can only make it up to a year. And so I was thinking like, why? We're in the middle of this and we're in the middle of other ordinances that we need to probably focus on. And we're not going to have any data centers coming to our doorstep anytime soon.
Somehow I had in my brain that I thought we passed, we were exhausted.
Yeah. As Laura and Belinda right found out that you can only pass it within a year. And since the data centers dropped their initial use permit hearing, then we don't need to.
You're right, I remember that now, we talked about it and, yeah. And we had discussions, but whatever. If you want to.
Yeah, I'll just see. The hearing got adjourned already.